Good evening, everybody. It's a appointed time for our meeting has arrived, a core is present, so I call the meeting to order. And I'll ask for a move, motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Let's all move.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have a slot here for public discussion. Let's see any members of the public here to address us. So we'll move on to item four in the agenda. For A, it's director evaluation, we had a preliminary conversation about this last month. And based on that, based on conversations with the city attorney, I drafted a proposed evaluation process. I, one of the things I heard in the discussion last month was that involving more people than just the president would be valuable. And so in number four, I thought of two options for doing that. So I'll throw it open to conversation, questions.
I have another question with option B. You have the board person, three volunteers, is that meaning like open meetings? Kind of, is there be four people in the room?
So as long as we stay under five.
As long as we stay under five, okay.
We can, we can meet privately. Yeah.
I like option B because it includes the people who gather the information.
Yeah.
Seems to me from most times.
Okay. Is he like option B?
Yeah.
Because I didn't hear.
Cause it includes the committee, the evaluation committee.
Which we're avoiding saying because official committees are be, can be required to meet in open session, so.
I like it for that reason too. And the fact that often from year to year, the president, vice president, secretary don't change.
Right.
So having volunteers one year means that the next year can be a whole different group of people. So we eliminate the potential for duplication.
Yep. Other thoughts?
I'd like to hear the employees idea. The person's gonna be affected by this.
Right, right.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with either, I think option B makes sense for the reasons that were already talked about. This is such a complex process because in years where things are, there's good interpersonal connection and it feels like everything's fair and even it doesn't really matter, but I think we all have to prepare for, for a potential where, where there is contention and there's issues with that. So option B feels like you widen on that a little bit, but what I could, I could go with either.
Option B is also the closest to what we have been doing.
Thoughts about other elements of the process?
Do we need to vote on this?
We, we do need to adopt it, yeah.
I move we adopt the new evaluation process using option B in number four of the proposal process.
Seconded. Um, uh, one comment I wanted to make within this. Um, I did discuss with Eric, the city attorney, whether this should be in trying this a policy or just be a decision we make. He much preferred this for its flexibility that things, uh, you know, that case is going to be appealed to the Supreme Court, things could be different next year and the board can adopt a new process next year. If they want to, so, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. And any opposed? Thank you, and I'll just, um, put a cap on that by saying that, at, at least two points, I think in my conversations with Eric, we reminded each other that we couldn't, couldn't have a good solution. We were just selecting one bad solutions to our, you know, finding the, the least bad solution, so. Thank you for, for helping with that. Uh, our next item of business is to set the calendar for the next fiscal year.
No, this is, this is a process of you every year, um, there's usually, um, we need to choose what in-service day is, what the designated holiday, holiday day around Thanksgiving and then when the designated holiday, through the union news and often it's very clear when you look at the calendar, what makes the most sense this year, um, it was pretty straightforward. Um, so these are the dates that we're putting forward, which would be, um, taking on the city holiday designation on that 28th of November. And then in-service date in December and the 24th of December as the co-essential holiday.
I appreciate the explanation of the staffing orders.
That was new this time.
And I was gonna say, I've never seen that before.
It's about the remote drop day, is that a day that facilities is, is there always one facilities person on like in the building? Like on Christmas, like is there a reason that you have to check the remote drop every day? Is, I don't know, like it just seems like you could maybe not have someone skip, someone go on Christmas day and whatever happens would also be there on the 26th. I don't know, it just, it's totally up to you guys, it makes no difference to me obviously, but.
It's a conversation that I have a facilities coordinator every year because I feel the same way that like, could you just have a day not at work? Um, the feedback I've gotten is that the possible work of an overflow then or being called sort of in an emergency situation at night because of something going on feels more problematic than spending an hour and a half doing the pickup.
They're the ones driving, so it's their decision, but it just, it just seems very conscious.
On closed days, um, we typically have somebody from facilities do a building walkthrough as well. Um, a lot of our systems are automated where you'd get a remote ping if there was something going on, but not all of them. So again, I think the feeling is having somebody from the team come in and be present in the building to check systems is better in the long run than, than coming back in and having a boiler explode.
Right, that makes sense.
Do you have any city festivals that can extend our hours into the evenings to participate, like we have in the past that caused some significant staff concerns?
That's a good point.
It's not on the calendar.
I don't think those dates are set this far in advance.
Over December, you can imagine.
Do we have the?
No longer participate in a block party with the building.
Okay.
With the hobby service and that's from the issue.
Okay, so we won't. I just remember that. Okay.
This is just a curiosity question. Um, why have you found that December works best for your in-service day?
That is a decision that has been, it's a historic practice at I C P L. Um, I don't remember the original justification, do you have any of you?
The original justification was that it was celebrating the anniversaries of the year, so it's done at the end of the year. Um, but not in conjunction with the holidays of the very end. But that's just how it's always been, um, we have to talk a lot about changing it, um, but.
Favor.
You know, we've talked about moving into different parts of the year, um, and there's pros and cons to all of it.
Like goes back to the study.
It's probably in my mind.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions about the calendar? And I think we do need to approve that, entertain a motion.
Please.
Move them there.
I'll second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Which brings us to what I think is meeting, um, the director's report, thanks for the thorough report covering the legislative situation, Elsworth. Any updates to any of that?
There have been a lot of committee meetings, some things have sort of been renamed or shuffled. Um, I would say we, the leadership team has been strategically trying to involve ourselves at the Capitol Building, so a number of us have been present for subcommittee meetings last week, this week. Really kind of crowdsourcing our talking points, making sure we're, we're trying to fill in the blanks so other, other speakers are leaving. We, I would say are, the obscenity exemption bills are very consistent. Those would have a drastic impact on, so. We don't know what percentage of the collection that would impact, but it would be, it would be big. Um, there's lots of ancillary questions around, so if these did go through, where would the gatekeeping be? Would it be at a point of registering for a library card, at the point of checking out a material? The point of walking in the building? Um, and, and it can be a challenge not to get too far into logistic weeds as we look at it at this point, so. The other, another, uh, set of bills that we've been involved in are the professional organization bills. Um, I think there's been some really great unpacking of what that impact could look like. Uh, where at the beginning it, it maybe felt like it wouldn't be so significant, but as, as we look at what the impacts would be, um, we understand better. Before we talk about specifics, I want to make sure and Anne's report, we included a copy of an update, um, about obscenity, that if there are any questions about the difference between offensive and obscene or, or any of that kind of question about like, why would the library be arguing to, to include, to, you know, to not get rid of obscenity exemptions and things like that? Cause it can be a nuanced conversation and it can be hard, especially if somebody is new to the conversation. Um, I think Anne's report does an exceptional job laying that out. But if anybody wants to talk about it, um, we've got a lot of leadership in the room that has been working on this for a long time. If not, we can try to answer specific questions about, um, individual bills, um. We've had some opportunity to speak one-on-one with bill sponsors, Anne and I were able to talk to Salmon. Um, and I'm, I'm sure other people have, have spoken to individuals as well. And I wouldn't say it's felt like there's a lot of eagerness to learn from public libraries, but we keep trying and we keep trying to share that really factual, practical information about what systems are in place already.
Can you explain if, if this passes? What the timelines are for in that camp, because this is going to be very costly, we're gonna have to do huge restructuring. And I'm wondering how many months we have to change our operations.
I don't think the current obscenity bills have a, a date sooner than like fiscal year. I mean, I think the, the soonest, I don't think, some of the other bills did, but do, does anybody know?
I have the impression that Ronald's office would have to review that.
Similar to how 496 was like a year ago and then that's what it's for now. That was a six month timeline for anyone who wasn't in it.
Uh, so within that question, I think is also, would there be definitive direction before that? Or would it just be a date of implementation and then, um, some systems would, would try to make up their own decisions about how far do we need to go, others might wait to get more explicit direction. Um, if the current drafts went through, um, I don't really see a path forward without closing the building.
Right, just now we do this, right, the library. Is the city concerned about the, the liability on this since the cities are also going to be under a big step?
I sent, um, all the bills we were watching with summaries to city manager's office and Eric Gor's and city legal, um, late last week and said, we're watching these, you know, if you have any feedback, I'd love to take it back to the board. I haven't gotten any distinct feedback on it. Um, Jen and I met with someone in the legal department this week about a few different things and we did touch base on, you know, we're, we're watching this and we'd love to see it, that's going to be a, a city legislative priority. Um, because it will have a significant financial impact and it could be fast and it could be, um, pretty involved.
Is, is the council of cities across the state expressing any, any stand up?
I do not believe that.
And you're like, so it's no concern when the city's saying this puts us in a very vulnerable position with this going?
No, and I, I assume that cities are watching these things, so I think this is an impactful one and I would think that most directors have, have at a minimum pass it on to make sure it's on the radar, um. I'm, I know that the city has lots of legislative concerns that are abroad and I think that these are are pressing and would have both significant access impacts, but also the financial impact. Um, and when you think about the, the criminal charges, um, that's another wrinkle that would staff would need to know what are the protections, where does the liability lie, all of those pieces. Uh, and that, that has a chilling effects, I think even at this point in the legislative process of what would happen if because of a responsibility of my job, I was placed on the registry, but explicitly, it makes me ineligible to work for the city. So how, well, how would that cycle work? And I think that um, a lot of attorneys are reluctant to answer those questions when it's theoretical, when we don't have what, what the actual information would be. But it's something that a lot of us are, are asking and wondering. The directors from the largest libraries in the state get together regularly, um, and we, we had sort of a unplanned meeting around legislation last week, um, and talked about what our strategies are with communicating with the city and with staff and the community. There's a lot of concern, of course, um, and the, it's, you know, the biggest question is again, sort of, how fast are we going to comply and what would that, what would that look like, what would be the requirements? If we really had to remove every item that included a reference to any kind of sexual act.
Sexual action.
We're talking about huge percentages, think about the bestsellers that have, have any kind of of that. Yes, and.
And Elsworth is, is there any way to do that efficiently or is it just a book by book look?
I'm gonna say there is not a way to do it efficiently because I think we would have some subject headings that we could pull, turn it in there. We could isolate some subject headings that were barely confidently would, would be need to be pulled. But I think about not knowing what the, what the real limits would be, would a picture book that has two adults hugging, would, uh, like where, where are the lines? And because it's so, um, I guess socially and culturally accepted that there would be romance and especially adult books, that's not going to show up in the cataloging and it may not show up in the reviews and it may mean literally handling every item.
How do you do that? You know, how do you, I know you're all real, very well read, but not that how we read every book in the land. I mean, how do you, how to, is there some kind of tool you can use and how do you do it?
Well, that's a really good question and I think there is.
Yeah.
That was been curious.
Um, I went to school, did it, when the high schools did it, it took, um, we started with banned books, you know, like you, you have the list of the ones that are most challenged and it started there. And then it went from ones that you knew, like you just kind of know some, it goes to there anecdotally. But we documented every single passage too before it was removed, like everything had to be documented just to be a hundred percent sure it was exactly compliant or not compliant. So there's PDFs of the pages, you know, that are specific and it took more than thirty people about six months to do it. And it's perpetual reading, you know, like it's, it's reading book by book and many books were pulled. You know, and it's also, and there were many that are questionable, is this a definition by law, is it not? You know, like it's a mention, it didn't specifically say, but everybody knows by the text what happened, like is that or is that not? Again, like, so there's a lot of, a lot of ambiguity.
It was one district that used.
One school district used AI.
One school district did AI and that, once other school districts took broad sweeps and just got rid of everything.
Yeah. I mean, I see, you know, so. We just have to lock the doors for months while we go through this. Um, because of vulnerability, we just couldn't operate.
The one piece is that the word knowingly was used because you can't assume that a professional knows every word of every book in their library. So that was the, um, while we were under review, that was the legal term that was on the table a lot was that were we knowingly providing these materials? But this would close a small library, like my, when I was director of Winfield Public Library, it's a one-room shack.
Yeah.
You know, with metal walls, it's just a farm shed. There is no way to separate the children, the children's and the adult section is separated by a shelf of DVDs, you know? So like it, it would be impossible to separate out without a whole new building. Or so it, you know, and here it would be a substantial undertaking, but I mean, it would just close small, small towns.
One thing that worries me is that the same thing might happen to public libraries that's happened with school districts in that the, the law went into effect long before the guidance came out. So people were just guessing about what they were supposed to do.
Exactly, like the process.
That's, that's. I'm really concerned for our organizations.
Yeah, which is why Iowa City was very careful about documentation, but small towns don't have the luxury or resources or time to do that. So it, it means really different things in each community, so if you're talking local control, this is the opposite of that. Um.
Well, it's also the opposite assurance of control. What is that professional insurance cover in terms of the availability? Because I mean, there's a good chance we'll be a test case. We need to know who's covering this defense.
I don't know if Senate File 347, which is the one that says that you can fill them in a easy ability to purchase anything that the section will have described in it. Will get any legs, but the obscenity exemption, we will, that will. Um, I would argue that nothing in our collection is obscene, it meets the miller test.
Right.
So what we have to kind of figure out is how much we want to test that according to.
Right.
Because I'd go to bat for anything that we got.
Right.
Um, and I think we would win, but how often do we want to do that and how much money would that?
It's gonna be costly, right, we gotta decide to do this, but it's interesting to see what the insurance will cover versus what we have to do, or what we have to do defensively versus collectively.
And we have small scale experience doing by hand assessment through diversity audits and some other special projects. But I, I think it's the scale of this kind of project would be just devastating to work for. And the idea that it would, we would, we wouldn't be able to have people in the building while we figured it out if the issue was exposure. Um, and that's a, that's a significant blow to many parts of the population. The, I wouldn't be surprised if vendors start putting out tools for this, that, that you can purchase. That means that you are, you're sort of trusting that they're, they're gonna apply the, the right level of, um, grading or whatever they might do. I have concerns about, um, even our general circulation model, the bulk of our circuit is done through self troops. Um, right now that's fine because our policies are if you have the card in your hand, you have the rights and privileges associated with that card. If we were, for example, to have to, to have minor cards and adult cards, we may lose that opportunity and that would mean a change in staffing model, probably a change in the physical checkout desk because they're not big enough to handle what, what the busy times of day would look like. Um, and the, so the impacts are, are deep and I think that we would probably be a test case, I think that there'd be swift action and that's, um, that's gonna be miserable. The comments at some of the committee meetings have been, um, just shockingly uninformed about what libraries do, things as dramatic as at this point, public libraries are the only place that explicit material can be filed. Like there's things that are, um, it, it, as an information professional, it makes me feel really sad that this, these community narratives get traction and instead of just coming to your local library and, and asking questions or exploring the catalog and things like that, people are, are just passing this on. Um, and I, I think we're, I think there's a pretty good chance that the obscenity exemption bills will pass. Um, and, and at that point we will have to, to figure it out. I, I think that, like I said before, I think we're doing the, the most we can to be, to be politically involved, to get our voices in the conversation, to advocate for the role of libraries, for the role of I C P L. It doesn't seem to be having an effect, but we're, we're doing the best we can.
So just physical items, there was this digital collections as well, do you know?
Both.
Oh, be all items, so if some kid gets their mom's Kindle, you're in trouble, right, is that, you know?
If the obscenity, uh, exemption is removed, I think we're gonna have a, um, you know, an, an, a difficult policy discussion. I, I think we could argue that we have a collection policy, we don't collect obscene materials, we're finished. That's, that's the end of the story. We'd have to assess the risks associated with that, which we probably would get to, I think would be extremely likely. So that's a discussion to have with the city about.
Do we have other allies beyond the city, like is the ALA going to stand behind us, do they have any resources or? Because I, I think we're gonna be put in a really tough position here and we're a national test case.
You mind?
No, go for it.
ALA would like to give legal and lobby support, ALA is sort of slowing that down. I think that they need to give it to a specific library, if they had a library with the winter shit, I bet I could connect you as soon as I could.
Yeah, ALA seems to be functioning differently, this legislature is.
Right, ALA is very keen to support this and like, as a program for doing this.
Right.
That's right. Thank you.
This would also mean revoking the aim card for all my students.
We know with, we would win dramatic changes in outreach, the book won't be on, everything that we do would be impacted. And until we understood, um, so some of our electronic resources, we, we can select sort of titles within, others are, are more packages. Um, there may be services that, that would just have to be cut. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if publishers get a little more interested in this legislation, um, as it moves, moves forward because you think about throughout Iowa, how many libraries are buying the bestsellers that would, would no longer be eligible for circulation? In one way, uh, individuals would, would probably buy them more often, but I think there's also a lot that just wouldn't sell them. Um, so.
I'm pretty sure Penguin, Random House and Har, and Harper Collins are already involved in the Nassau 496 lawsuit at this time, so that's still pending, but since they got involved in just school libraries, I can only imagine they would be involved in a statewide, all ages.
Dying was on our presidential advisory committee to get looking for libraries to support this thing, uh, human rights.
Yeah, and I know that they're already involved and they're, yeah, they're already involved in some legal issues with past legislation and this is just an extension of that legislation, so I can only imagine they would continue.
Do you think that sense that the larger libraries in Iowa could unite on some of this, whatever policies are decided on? If we were consistent across the state with the larger libraries, or is it just a diversity and I think it's about it in real?
That was one of the things we talked about earlier was, what, what are my questions, what should we try to get?
Right.
Board representation together because the board can do some things that the libraries can't, um. It felt like there was a lot of diversity in, um, in sort of individual responses, but I'm not sure that we. I'm not sure if we, if we revisited it with a more concrete proposal, I think that there's potential. Um. And.
Would that give us strength? Would that actually just complicate things? Because I just think the test cases.
Yeah, it's, it's hard because the. The relationships in that group are very strong and we come from very different areas of the state. So what works in the council of lives. May not work for us um.
Versus.
And. So I EPLA is the group that, that I talk about the most often, so this group in terms of Iowa library meetings. And that's the fourteen largest cities in the state. I EPLA. I'm not sure has ever released like a tweet statement or a, something with our name on it and as far as public facing. So I don't know that it would be damaging to have just a subset of that group um that maybe come from more similar communities or even the same size communities. Um, we could still try to find a group to work with to, to further our message, to sort of amplify it across the state, even if it wasn't the, the full group. And. I think there's also potential to. To request the city attorneys meet with, you know, a group of directors or boards and uh kind of get an idea of. How different places are approaching at this point um. And I'm, I'm open to facilitating any of that, that, that the board would like um. I. I think that if I pose that question again to the group as far as. We try to create a statement or something like that, that. I think there'd be active conversation. Uh, there was a document started that we sort of put in talking points and thoughts together around especially the obscenity exemption bills um. So I, I mean, I think that there's certainly possibility for some. Kind of work. We also always have the director group from Johnson County Public Libraries.
Right.
There's a variety of sizes, a variety of um political meetings in the communities, but. That's another group that um I meet with very regularly. We have the, the court order libraries, which are sort of a newly formed group that gets together. So if the idea was we want to make a good statement, we, there are a number of options.
I just think we need to start identifying our allies then. I think it's a really good idea and I think we need to be proactive. Instead of waiting to see what happens. Better to have. Know the lay of the land, at least know whether we have allies, whether we're gonna be on our own. Where do we stand? Being. Not, it's not too early to have that conversation.
I think it's two conversations. One is that we've been talking kind of operationalizing as the cost of physical property. There's also just. The societal values and maybe we have. Allies through the A C O U or through other groups that we. Don't understand the philosophical part of this.
I think if, if. If the goal were to make a statement that would influence legislation, which I. I'm not optimistic could happen. Um. Eh, I think. Around the state would be extremely important to, frankly, there's nothing that Iowa City can say that will make a difference. You know, if, if council buffs and suit. Send them, you know. Maybe. But I doubt that too. So I don't know, I don't know if it's really. Valuable, spend a lot of energy trying to create a statement that everybody can sign on to. I, I'll just say. Are creating one. Have, only have the value of reminding our community of where we stand, which is a value, but it would not influence the legislation.
Considering that it already moved on from subcommittee, I mean, yesterday at ten AM it moved forward.
Yeah.
So. Despite strong opposition and many comments with philosophical. Big picture ideas, it continues to move on.
Yeah.
Because I just see the words obscenities and minors and of course want to protect children.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess my analysis would be. Voting against this opens you up to a challenge from the right in your next election.
Yeah.
That's so.
Yeah.
So now.
But even if there, there weren't a, a joint statement, at least if you can feel out the group and see if there. Is you. Are there any libraries who would want to try to approach it from the same, you know, same actions, same. Uh. Relationships with their attorneys, that sort of thing, or suit. It might even only be one other library, but at least if we had a. An ally.
I think in the past we put out these statements last year. I feel like we fought and we went down, we fought and what I even heard from. The legislators only there is, they would say, yeah, that's interesting, but I'm still gonna vote the way I want, right? They're wrong. There's something else going on.
Yeah.
That we can't fight this with facts. We've got to be prepared to defend ourselves.
Yeah, and I want to clarify that. When I say that the EPLA directors are all coming in different directions. It's not, uh, there's no rift in philosophy.
Right.
And of course, the access of the priority, it's, the differences are sort of how our city is structured, how autonomy do we have? Uh, what is, what does the? The, the current temperature of the board feel like?
Right, yeah.
So it's, I, I want to be clear that there's no, no library directors are saying, I'm not sure.
You know, it might be okay.
So I can check back in with that group and sort of ask about um. Interest in, in even just talking through more details of approach and. Something that might be effective too is for us to kind of come up with a joint talking points with for our cities, our city attorneys, so that the messaging is, is consistent.
Is there anything else the staff would like us to do that we're not a done upon?
Their actions here.
We give out deals office.
I think we'll say the Senate file of. To remove the public library exemption, only went to the subcommittee, has not brought to the broader. Broader education committee, with a lot of members on that committee. Um, and I only did that they haven't had an email everybody.
Yeah.
So I don't think everybody's. I don't know if everybody understands the implications of what moving public library exemption could be. Um. I think they're faced with, I don't know how many bills that at one time indeed, and they want to run with them as fast as they can. They have, they want to get out of here as soon as possible. But I think if you talk to them about a taxpayer money. And. The court system being just. Bill for what ends up being a necessary lawsuit. I think that that is. A good message for them to hear. In addition to permitting access to.
Absolutely agree. I did notice that it really was all talk about the library school last year. That's how we shut down the show versus made. Guaranteed funding for libraries, reminding them that this only circumvests the procedures and processes that create trades and use on a regular basis. Again, the state is trying to overscribe.
And the House version that the public libraries actually been passed after the full committee, but it wasn't fully unprivileged.
Oh.
And I think the staff are feeling really affected by this legislation um. I try in communication with all staff to balance. Of course factual information. Um, but not making it seem hopeless that we, we can do our best to persevere um. But we have many staff who are tuned in to um exactly where the bills are and who are watching subcommittee meetings and. I think it's having an effect on staff morale. I think that there's a concern for job security. I think there's a concern for what if my work becomes disconnected to my values, which have been organizational values. But if there's a split, what does that mean? Um. And we're also seeing, um, I think just because of the political climate in general. Patron behavior has sort of escalated. We haven't, as far as I know, gotten many direct comments from the patrons or the public about these bills. But I know last legislative session, we did have some. Some people who come in and sort of weaponize um and. Use it as a platform to abuse staff. Um, like I said, we haven't seen that that I know of this year. But we've um, we've been talking at a leadership level and around like what can we do to, to make their staff feel supported um. And, and are informed and not overwhelmed um. Many of our staff are also. Watching other pieces of legislation with, with deep concern and, and personal feelings about what, what's happening in the state, so. That's um, it, it feels like a really tough intersection and. I think that the staff really. Uh, appreciated the legislative, the letters around advocacy that the board did last year. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that that should be done. Um, just because of staff interest, but. Knowing that the board is. Is watching and staying abreast and, and thinking about impacts um feels really basic, but that matters. I always write a summary of the board meeting for all staff um after we meet. And you know, that's, that's another way that I can express, you know, the bulk of the meeting was about talking about legislation and.
Right.
And. Trying to work through what, what we can do to lessen the impact um. And we are getting close to the end of the funnel. It ends on the seventh, so. But every day that goes by is um. Little more optimistic that, that uh we might have more time to think about things, but um. But there is still time for them to be assigned to committee and pushed through. The library levy related legislation has not um. Advanced. Very far. Um, so I think it, I, I don't know if it's technically. Uh, too late for it to move on, but we'd be cutting it close there. Um, it was really promising to see. Um. Bipartisan support for that idea, and I thought both were uh written in a way that made sense, um even though, even the one that had a little bit more specific language. But those two have not progressed.
What about that enrich Iowa? Eligibility, is that, I didn't follow that one. Can you be up to date on it?
Yeah. So Simon Andrew were there. Do you guys want to give an update?
Yeah, so um. The goalpost continued to move on this um on. Essentially enrich Iowa would be withdrawn from libraries. It would be eligible with an institutional or even perhaps individual membership into professional association. This on the streets is known as the anti ALA and ILA bill, but you can't say that because it would be illegal. And so it was our job to impress upon them that over ninety librarians and fifteen institutions in the state of Iowa also want to associate with smaller libraries. And again, I really did a great point to me, telling me that if you're in library council, I'll just say fifty five thousand dollars because of our membership last year alone.
Yeah, the way we changed the way that we did our hoopla was based on what we learned at our library council.
They were concerned about Marxist leanings. I reminded them of um. And Iowa that will be holding that position for a year and that didn't matter. So then the goalpost moved to one of the library bill rights talks about not discriminating by age. Instead of accepting that that is a value that we hold as Iowa was in nineteen thirty eight when we wrote it before I only adopted it, it determined that that was no longer a value.
Isn't that at some point a violation of that freedom of speech and freedom of advocacy to advocate, to be unable to advocate for yours?
The library association shot this bill down because they were ready and prepared to sue the state for. It, it, it's on for lunch. Yeah, and so it was not received by the education community. It was supposed to be a lot of fun today, but the running theory is either. They're rewriting the bill with some Republican caucus staffers have asked me about some of the locations that would be useful for their, their finding of knowledge, they're receptive to that information. Um, because there are theological library associations as well. Um, so they're either redrafting it or they're running out of clock and saving the place because they know that.
Most thinking back to my small town library days and. Oh, and even then I only kids the lights on without I L A helping. I mean, I didn't know what I was doing. And the, the people who took over for me had no idea what they were doing. So like without I L A telling me what paperwork to fill out, like eh, eh, you know, like. Without them, it wouldn't have been a library in the first place. So they could take the funding if they wanted to. There wouldn't be anything.
You don't have my other phone. You shouldn't be a great point that the state library is not important to the other libraries.
That's their other. Parts that the state library can take over the jobs and the duties of I L A.
But they. From redundancy.
Yeah, the state library has been cut and has had significant budget cuts just in the last ten years. They are no longer equipped to. Provide education and one on one helps for five hundred forty.
You have five hundred forty four libraries in this town. So do you think they're mostly to attack a leverage and defend itself or one that wants? Like a small library.
But I was not read as conservative because I work here. Iowa City is supposed to be.
The target.
So I have the impression that somebody, whether it will be.
Yep.
Would have a.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're. Maybe they think that.
I also think we run the risk of somebody who opposes legislation. Litigating to make a point around.
Yeah.
A, a different kind of text um. Which uh. As a human, I understand the sentiment, but as a. My line director, I would like that not to have. Show. It's, there's a lot to, to think about, but. We're. Jen and I met with um. Some. Staff from the city legal department this week and one of the things we talked about was. They'll go back through with us um. How the city sees. Staff involvement in political process and what is, what is within the box and what is outside of the box. And it was a, it was a good conversation. Um, I feel like they took our questions really seriously and they, they gave thoughtful answers um. So we're gonna keep talking about that at a leadership level and. Um, I feel really strongly that everything that we're doing right now um fits well with all expectations. We're really sticking to facts and we're, we're, I'm seeing it as educational and not lobbying. We're, we're going to a subcommittee meeting to. Give context and factual information um, which is different than standing up and sharing a lot of opinion.
What about board input? Um. Is it better for us to communicate as a board or is it okay for us to communicate as individuals? What? Now, what's, what's the best approach to? Making, oh, I shouldn't say making an impact, but what's the best approach to voice saying those facts?
I think it depends on the vehicle. So I think if you're making comments in the billboard, those would need to be individual um. I think if there was interest in our, our joint. Letter to the editor or column somewhere, having that be from the board could be really powerful um. So I, I think it just depends.
Maybe there's different audiences too. One is the legislative, one's also our staff. And our community, right? So you might do it in different ways.
And I think it also can be a really great. Um, opportunity for staff and trustees to work together. So if. Community group wanted an update on legislation, having um a voice from, from the library staff and a voice from the library board. Not only would be a. Indication of solidarity and collaboration, but also would. Allow. The trustee to say the things that the library staff um may feel constricted in um and still be able to. Uh, with authority, give that factual information about the day to day operations um. And sometimes the questions come around this legislation are um. Are around like really minute details about how the library works. So tell me again, do you? Do you hand the card to the person working to check out the materials? Do they scan it while it's in your, like, things that you feel like? Okay, like we can answer these, um, but it feels like there's, there's bigger topics that we can.
Also, you can encourage them to go to their library.
Yes. They, right, which is a lot of time you went through it. Like, why, why make policy if you haven't been to where you want, right? The library policy.
But again, I think you're trying to take a progression like you point, and I'm not sure that's what this is.
Oh, I think it's quite rational. It's just about being reelected.
Okay, right.
The rational strategy.
It's a different end goal.
And this, this year, there's been language that I didn't hear last year from, I would say, library supporters um. Emphasizing the, the library voluntary inquiry. So the messaging includes sort of like, if you don't like it, don't go. That's not messaging that I'm ready to adopt yet, but I think it's um. I mean, it's a valid point. We sort of say that in different ways as far as. We collect broadly and you have the invitation to access what you'd like and leave what you don't um. But to, to sort of put that um. Phrase around it feels. I'm a little nervous to see where that will go because it feels, it's a little exclusionary and we've worked so hard to lower barriers for access to.
The fiscal response.
And to, to be here for everybody. So I'm, I'm not adopting that yet, but I think it's important that we pay attention to that kind of shift in language um. So that we're ready to, to respond when it's our turn to talk.
But I think it was such a stage for someone to say, yes, but we're taxpayers on financing. It's like, give responses so immediately we want to avoid that.
Right, right. I think it's very good. Yeah.
Looking. Is the, looking ahead, are we seeing? In Iowa and other states where this has happened? Changes in enrollment and M L I S programs?
I don't think so. I, not that I've heard, but I haven't seen that. Does anybody else?
Well, that's possible.
Like with the MLS programs, there's every year, there's like a constant narrative of. We're coming up on a wave of retirement. So this is a great, it's always a great time to get a library degree because there's gonna be all these jobs.
Yeah.
Um and I I think sometimes too about. We make some assumptions when we think about librarians in terms of political beliefs and where they would align on these issues. And that's not true. There are people who get MLS degrees who who represent a range of of beliefs um. So part of me wonders, as as the shift in different states, will there be? More people coming into the field that didn't feel like they could be part of it before um, which will have an. Interesting effect, um but.
But two things, I I'm thinking in response to what you're saying, some of them are muzzled. We heard that people were getting the overseas and their jobs would be on the line if they speak up and say college and we know that's valid. But that'd be much, but the same things, when we look at allies, we we see. Um who is on that board, who? Well, she can't always. She she has her respect, huge respect to position. She's a wonderful ally.
I'm just thinking like we're seeing, especially in rural areas, shortages of every profession right now in Iowa, so. I don't think that's gonna be an issue here in Iowa City, but if we're looking at libraries in ten or fifteen years in the state, are there gonna be librarians to work at them?
Probably need librarians in the libraries.
Well, that could be, let's just not require a library.
Some of the impacts of these bills also will deprofessionalize positions. I mean, if. If we don't need um someone to curate a collection, but we need someone to check a list to see if that title is allowed to be purchased. Do you need a library degree to do that um?
It already happened in school libraries.
And I think I included the DAS uh changes to state library reporting. As a piece of legislation of interest, because I think we have to pay attention to um. Where are those changes? And are we looking at a possibility of no longer having an accreditation system in our state or? Because those also drive the types of positions that we require certain education or experience for um. And and those standards are something that I regularly reference when I'm talking to the city about staffing levels, about what. Um why we might need to replace a position with a late position or big changes. Um and I think in Iowa City, we are not at a risk of um like a. A swift and simple change if accreditation went away, but other communities might be. And I cannot speak to what future city management or city councils would look like. So the. Those aren't getting much attention. Um and there were some changes last year too that that I think just didn't rise to. A level that people were were worried about because there's so many other things. Um. But we know there've been some retirements in the state library and. Um it doesn't look like things are are going to be filled right away. Um there's been some. Top of of restructuring and I think it's something to watch careful.
So how will we be, we have a a system to keep updating the board between now and our next meeting because this is a pretty hot season.
Yeah, a lot is gonna happen between now and the next.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
I just think we need to figure out some systems. We can't wait a month to just watch.
It's just information, we could just email it, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that wouldn't be just. Yeah, I mean, I say secret, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I think if using the. Particularly at the funnel, we uh you know, an update would be. Useful there. That that should at least narrow our.
Is it true that it would have to come from like Ellsworth or would we be able to?
Yeah, the committee, I'm thinking maybe the committee, you and I should work on that.
Is that something we should do? Because I don't know what level it has to be public. At what level it could just be emailed.
One more task on the staff and I'm I'm trying, I'm hesitating. And we seem there for it in two of, we can do it as a committee.
Yeah.
Are coordinated with them to figure out how to share the task.
Email can go on the public record.
Oh, email, okay.
Yeah, any email you send to the whole staff. You're gonna be monitoring this.
Is this something where the other committee should mail, we're trying to meet with the staff for most buildings to. Do some coordination so there's staff or or I, I don't wanna make this more cumbersome, but I'm just. I'm just, this is maybe a busy moment. How do we, how do we become proactive rather than just? And what we said too, that doesn't mean, you know, a lot of people can't be there, it's just you and I.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be a burden to to either have us create a basic report. It could be as simple as these are the. This is the progress here links to the billboard. Um and everybody could do that, but. We also could do a meeting where we talked about how much information is per to share and what does that look like?
Or when you're talking about the community education aspect, to combine trustee and staff, it's something we should be. Thinking about, we can't just wait for the community education. I think people are are, they're just not getting it. Or as they're Iowa City and we do get it and we're just. That annoying spot.
Yeah, I mean, twenty miles out of town, it's different.
Right.
Story.
Right, different priorities in front of them, just their basic survival.
And then different interests in educating students or like a different choice in. You can see and interest in legislation at all. Outside Iowa City, so um.
Well, I think community standards.
I think so too. I think they're different. You go to West Liberty, it's different than here. Go to Solon, it's different than here.
So what's the preference? I mean, cause I, like I said, we could create an update, we could, if if you wanna try, I mean. Realistically, between now and the end of the funnel, I can only really imagine one.
I just think your team's most knowledgeable.
And is that information you're gonna be putting together anyway?
Sam, and they know there's.
And Angie. Important point to make to this, when libraries around say, do the work of us. Like you are the standard, they don't talk about doing it, it's its own thing. I was sitting with standard, I'm saying that because they're a small group. I just wanna make sure, like, we'll understand the gravity.
Well, I guess maybe your opinion, would it be more meaningful if it came from a joint? Board and staff comment, I don't know. I don't know, would that be helpful? Would that be meaningful to a staff who's not in the room?
So I think, you know, we've got an advocacy committee. I think this would have been a good opportunity to use it and. Um I would actually. Look to the advocacy committee to recommend an action and I'm hearing reassuring staff. That we, you know, that we're paying attention as a very high priority and then maybe educating community. But maybe the two of you and whatever staff could just have a conversation and then email the board. We can always do an emergency meeting. Or uh, I don't know, but anyway.
I think there's a third part of that too, of just the lobbying advocacy potential.
Yeah, if if there's something that can be done.
I mean, I I think what was raised earlier about the judiciary education lobbying is. It's gonna be relevant here, what the staff can do and and then. I don't wanna assume that we have a big consensus here either and how we feel about this across the board, so.
Well, as as I say, we can, if if the advocacy committee comes up with, you know, here's something we think we should do, we can.
We respond to specific.
Yeah, yeah.
What, can anybody remember if they saw or heard from trustees in the subcommittee meetings we've gone in? I don't know the.
The one that we were in had one trustee.
A trustee spoke.
That's interesting. That's interesting.
The different style of community.
Shall we move on to the collection services department report?
Can I go back to the former thing? For the minors at drag shows, we can talk about that specific bill. Where is that? Because it affects our our story time.
Yeah.
On program. Uh did that go forward? That went forward too, so um. We, it just wasn't a priority in our discussion time, but does it affect our planning program? Our auntie, how's Auntie doing that? Okay. We're closed.
We're not really.
We're not really close. That was from last week.
We're closed. There's another voice here. Okay, so at this point, it's not, there's no immediacy to it.
So the um. One fifty eight House study bill was recommended passage on the eighteenth. But there's a companion House study bill, no, that's where it is. So it's a recommended passage, but not.
So out of subcommittee, is that what that means?
Yes, the subcommittee recommends.
So it's cleared the funnel.
Yep.
And I think that's a, what was just said about it hasn't reached a priority even in this conversation. In other sessions, this would be getting a lot of attention from the library community and because they're the, the bigger crusoes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we can figure out the email, what next steps as far as we might be.
Thanks, Dave. So much less controversial, I think, bibliographic record updates. Pretty fascinating, um but probably not too, I don't know. And are there any questions about the um? Update from Anne and the reporter. Yeah. Yeah.
And homosaurus is a great.
Homosaurus, I love it, yeah.
Yeah, I am amused by the. How it looks in the. On the screenshot there, come on, Steve. Yeah.
I think this kind of report and um the IT report this month as well. Are really great examples of what's internal communication for the board, but also it goes in public. Meeting documents and uh also helpful for the staff who might. Hear us talk about these kinds of things, but if you're not in that department or you're not involved, so.
Yeah.
I just take a lot of time to put together and I I think that they're just so valuable. So thank you, Anne.
Yeah, so to say this work is, I mean, you're always updating on the state, but is the bulk of this. At this time.
Yeah, and then now we're gonna go into maintaining fees, so every quarter we get new records and.
That's just a crazy amount of strategy and I appreciate that.
Uh shall we move on to the children's services department report?
We made sure to include a little bit of information about all abilities club. I remember some questions about that.
And the IT report. Well, that's exciting.
Is that something like? The public would have no awareness of this ILS change theoretically, right? Or hopefully. That would be no, like the general public would have no idea that this has shifted to a new model.
If in any way that there might be new features that we're able to offer on the public.
Oh, like on the public, so this is not like the catalog, the public facing catalog or we should have. Only enhanced features to the catalog, okay. I'll let close this soon, next week.
So, um. An open source product, would it get into the process because there's a vendor that supports it that would respond to the RFP? So how would get there?
All of them that different companies manage.
Yeah.
Um and they offer the ability to uh they can code more for us or we can code.
Right.
So that might be about good for that type of.
Right. So they're they're not, you know, a purely community supported product. Well, that will be exciting. And brings us to the development department report. Any questions or?
Uh I think it's brilliant to have the fundraising event outside of fundraising event season.
I would like to um give these to the these flyers, if anyone would like them for the fundraising event. So you have some items on hand if you'd like to share them with people. Um we are, um we have about um sixty paid tickets. Um at this point, can you land? Um we have about two hundred people at the event, a hundred would be nice, but two hundred be better. Um and it's generated um uh I think about. Or I have the number in my head, or about forty five, thirty five, forty five um community tickets. From what we can distribute to regular partners of the library so that not helping the students, such as the library. Um um and generally go to other libraries and that'd be nice as well. So we're we're really excited about that. Whether this is coming together.
Yeah, this is, this planning process has been a good opportunity. Um since the library hasn't done um. An event like this, since I've been here, we had the COVID suppression of this kind of fundraising. Um Katie and I have been able to sort of learn together. Um how the implementation of some policies happened and um it's been, it's been good because I think that the next time we'll have it. Uh fresh in our minds. Um I think. I'm I'm really pleased with the ticket sales. That's that's surpasses what I would expect. We can come at this point and we're hoping to see that continue to grow.
Yeah, it should be a great evening. Yeah, hope to see a lot of you there. Oh, president's report. Um I have uh. Come up with a nominating committee consisting of the trustees who will be leaving the board uh in. At at the end of the fiscal year or so, Hannah and DJ and I will meet uh to prepare a slate of of. Candidates for the three uh positions. Uh we'll have an election at the April meeting. And as always, we'll prepare a slate, the nominations to a floor are always a possibility. If you have thoughts, communicate them to one or all of us.
Well, I can point that right away.
Yes.
When you say three are leaving, none of you are gonna reapply? Or are you all really seriously leaving? Or are you just saying the terms are, those are two different.
None, none of us is intending to reapply. At this point.
We're also the only group since we've been here that has all made it our entire.
That's right.
Except you. We are the only group that has made it.
Leaving together.
So I think we get an award of some kind.
Pretty sure. No more time.
I I have one word. Comment.
Yes.
First thing, I'm, I I keep not willing to hear the all three of you leaving, but I've just, okay, as we think this through. If we know we're gonna three openings, we might encourage transfer attorneys to consider joining the board this year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That anyone knows an attorney, in the past, we've had an attorney on board, this is the first time we don't. Because the city attorney's responsibility is different than just having guidance. On the board, and we don't, we don't select board members, however. This could be a challenging moment. And it's just.
Yeah.
I just thought you were pushing with terms and kind of just saying, well, you don't know what's gonna happen, but you know that you have a plan, I'm a little more nervous.
I I would say more generally, it's time to start talking to people who would make good trustees and attorney among them, but. And I I do have somebody who would like to kind of turn it through, but yeah. And this is, there's always a lot of applications or.
Right.
You know, so.
But we might think about our skill set and think about where some of our gaps in our skills.
And if any of you three were to take command about running again. I think that we are in an unusual environment. I think that we are in an unusual environments where typically. In my time here, the council feeling has been we want to give lots of people a chance to be involved in governments. Looking at the legislation and the budget right now. And there would be more grounds from some years to go to to that body and say. Having six years of experience would be a real benefit. That's not to imply pressure. We're so thankful for the service. And I do not speak for council in any way. I just feel like we're it's different now than it has been in other years.
It's it's pretty interesting because there's actually a policy statement that um council will not consider incumbency for a reappointment. But every time I've heard them talk about it, they've talked about spreading it around, so. Yeah. That brings us to announcements from members. Are there any announcements? And committee reports, I think advocacy committee has work to do now. Yeah. Uh finance committee.
Still trying to meet with the foundation for finance.
Yeah, we'll we'll find.
Even if it's just two people.
Yeah.
Or on both ends.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Just me.
Yeah. And anything to report from the foundation members? Uh note that there were news articles provided in the communications section. Are there any questions or comments about those? Brings us to consent agenda. Have a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Cause I'm building for a new record on the other end, so.
I want to go back to a comment I was with me earlier about um seeing more behavioral challenges or. There's a change in the culture of the community in the library. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that just a little bit. I don't want to second one's timing, but I think if we know we're having, in in the past, when we've had tough periods, we've tried to. Look at our reaction to some of these things, our response and to be proactive. And if we're in the beginning of a trend. Um I would like to hear about before it becomes.
It's, so we've got um good timing around, there's already a committee within our library use policy in preparation for bringing that stuff forward for review. So that's a major tool we use in managing behavior. Um that's sort of organic right now. But I would say the last several weeks, couple months, we've had behavior challenges that. That are really on the outside edge of what we normally have and some of that. We attribute to um mental health, substance abuse, uh just lack of other resources. I think that more recent instances have. I think there's so much stress in the community around. All of the collectivity, um there's there's some fear from many parts of the community um. It's it's just manifesting as um. We had a lot of behavior. We did a ten year suspension last week, which. We make every attempt not to issue that's the longest suspension that we can um. And we've had other sort of mid-length suspensions, lots of you're gonna need to leave for the day um. And I I think. Leadership team talks about any significant suspension at our regular weekly meeting. So if it's anything more than a day, maybe a couple days. We'll we'll revisit the conduct report. We'll talk about um impacts. Uh and we we follow up with staff as appropriate when they were involved in something um, but it. It's sort of cyclical in general and right now we're at what feels like an apex of of these problematic behaviors. We've had. Pretty good responses when they called the police community outreach folks. Um. I think some of our true social service, so non-city but community group, um social services have. Are are really struggling to keep up and they're doing the best they can, but. We don't always get um a prompt response when they call for for specific needs um. And I don't know if any of the coordinators have more specific comments about the behavior we're seeing. We. We had some adult issues in the children's room that has resolved because of a suspension um. But any other comments are welcome.
It was also a week that was really cold. That really seemed to push.
Right.
Winter shelter and the shelters are not open during the day.
And staff are so. Great about handling things with compassion and being trauma informed and doing the very best they can um. But I think when you get to the end of a three hour district and you've had. Thirteen behavioral issues, a complex genealogy question and somebody with a broken Kindle, um it. It really takes a toll and we also worry about um. Loss of support from higher need library users um who who come to do what we might call more traditional. Work at the library and. Navigate with us through the complexities of all different types of of needs and behaviors um. Some of those things we're looking at very specifically in the behavior um in the library use policy review um. It's like sleeping in the library um. All of those pieces of that that contribute to the way it feels um. I feel really strongly about the work we've done to be more inclusive and to welcome everybody and to create that sense of belonging. And I want to tread very carefully as we look at um. Are we right sized? Um or are there things that we might need to to adjust? Anne's point, while the weather is really strong, I. It's not unusual when we have that kind of outside force going on that we see spikes. This um.
It's rational, people are.
Yes, um.
Especially if you're tired.
Yeah, yeah, and. We sort of see patterns of substance use too that when when something is moving through the community. We may have several issues in a day or a week related to a specific type of behavior um. But often that will pass and calm back down, but. It feels like a peak right now um and and we're working to support staff to make sure everybody feels okay. We had a. We've had a couple that feel more dramatic than usual, where there's sort of a broader swath of people involved and it might be louder or more disruptive um. But even then, staff seem to rally very quickly. We do take care after those events to reach out to everybody to. Remind people about EAP, to sort of offer opportunities to. Do you wanna talk about how you feel um? And I think the leadership team does a really good job of modeling. A balance of resiliency, but also being human and saying like. That was scary for me too, um but that didn't feel good when it was happening and. That doesn't mean that that you're not great at your job and equipped and you've done all the training. Um and I appreciate that because I've I've worked in libraries where the culture was very much like. You keep a straight face and you don't, you don't talk about how it felt to go through it um. And I've said this a couple times, as we review the library use policy um. While I would never hope for disruptive incidents. Having them in recent memory can be really helpful because it creates a little bit more sense of urgency around. Um those specific points that we we pull out. And if everybody knows here is aware, we we can pull those policies through you anytime we want. So it's not like we would have waited to do this, but um. But this is um a good time to be looking at it. Uh Jason has a staff, a group of staff working on it and I think we're gonna get. Get good feedback. Oh, are you Sam Zoom?
I'm just sorry the staff's being kept by.
Yeah, it feels feels hard. We, there's a new uh cat cafe at town. We've talked about um speaking with them about. It's hard to balance those um. Sincere but small kind of actions with staff. Um we we never wanted to seem like. Really like you had a terrible experience, like here's some pizza. But sometimes.
Come walk my dogs whenever.
Or having a treat like does make a difference, so uh we're always always trying to find the right balance.
Thank you. Bring your therapy dog back.
Yeah.
On all the pages, for the all abilities club. Dog back. We'll be looking, I mean. We should consider as a board, like what what else we can do.
Right.
To be supportive, like if it's.
I agree.
Um no boo pay for a Zoom. Meeting with somebody or training or like outside of our December. I mean, it's a long way till December till another staff meeting, so. Like, how can we be more on point? With support.
Right. I agree.
Right. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Did I get a second? Robin moved there.
He just says on me as a question.
Jimmy, did I get a second? Okay.
I didn't say anything, but I will second.
Thank you, all right.
If I'm forced.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda. Uh any opposed? Okay. Let's take a quick peek at the agenda for. Our next meeting. The director evaluation now will just be me saying we did it. It's done. Um we'll have a six month strategic plan update. Review the second quarter financials. We'll look at the library use policy and have department reports from. Adult Services and Community Access Services. Having reached the end of our agenda. Chair recognizes.
Acknowledge the passing of Janet Freeman, who is a board member and a a really um chair from the library community. We are. We're sorry for that loss. Um I'm not sure if the board has done anything in the past to acknowledge. Passing of trustees, but even if all it is 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 mentioned in this meeting, um it feels important to do so.
At least it's also from Janet's collection.
Yes, there's a donation.
Yeah, so let's note that. And. Meeting stands adjourned.